Good evening, I call the August 13, 2020 meeting of the Park Hill Board of Education to an order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I call for announcements, I would like to remind the Board of our norms. Be prepared, display integrity, remain mission-driven, goal-focused, stay in the role of a board member, no brand standing, and assume positive intent. All right, we'll move on to announcements. Ms. Newberger?
None, thank you.
Mr. Robinsons?
No, thank you.
Mrs. Yubada?
None, thank you.
Mr. Klein?
None, thank you.
Ms. Bowlin?
None, thank you.
And Dr. Cowan?
You know, I think it's one we all know that tomorrow we have the opportunity to welcome back our returning teachers. So we're very excited about that happening tomorrow. And then our support staff, the majority will be returning to us on Monday. And so we're thrilled about that one, too. Our new teachers came to us earlier this week on Tuesday, so we can do that one. And Alyssa, if you wouldn't mind, we're getting some reverb back from Mrs. Rades. So if you could check that, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to item two, adoption of the agenda. I will need a motion and a second to adopt the August 13, 2020 agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Bowlin and a second by Mrs. Newberger to adopt the agenda as presented. Dr. Cowan, are there any modifications?
None this evening, thank you.
Board, any qualifications? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries six zero. All right, we will move on to item three, awards and recognitions. We have several. Ms. Kirby?
All right. So we're doing recognitions a little differently in the age of COVID. And so what we're going to do here, there we go, is I'm going to go through each of our recognitions this evening. And we've let, hopefully they'll get to see this, and if not, maybe they'll see the video later. So we'll start with the HOSA, Future Health Professionals Organization. I'm told that HOSA used to stand for something, and now it's one of those things like FCA that doesn't anymore. All right, Amy Montalbano took seventh place in speaking skills and received the bronze recognition for the Barbara James Services Award at HOSA's Future Health Professionals 43rd Annual International Leadership Conference. And Ainsley Higgins scored in the Mastery category on the Healthcare Issues Exam at that International Leadership Conference. We have several students who were recognized in PTA's Reflections Contest, the local and the state level. And then we had McKenna Miller, who was recognized as a national level. She took first place in Dance Choreography in the Reflections Contest from Missouri PTA, and then the Outstanding Interpretation Award from the National PTA Reflections Contest. Marina Grobeck took third place in Film Production from the Missouri PTA Reflections Contest. Celia Poulsen took fourth place in Music Composition at the state level. Leila Stone took second place in Music Composition. Annabelle Porter took second place in Literature at the state level. Katherine Supinski took fifth place in Music Composition at the state level. Elijah Hogan took second place in Visual Arts at the state level. Chloe Falconham took fifth place in Film Production at the state level. Laurel Barton took fifth place in Literature at the state level. Sophia Finney received honorable mention for her literature submission at the state level. Lila Langford took fourth place in Film Production at the state level. Anna Tolson took fourth place in Literature from the Missouri PTA Reflections Contest. Lily Lagergren took fourth place in Music Composition at the state level. Sean Walden took second place in Film Production, state level. Kinsley Branham took second place in Dance Choreography. Thomas Corsten took fourth place in Dance Choreography. Mackenzie Sullivan took first place in Photography. Connor Kern took third place in Visual Arts. Isabella Anthony took fourth place in Visual Arts. Faith Galloway took first place in Film Production. Wyatt Pevelin took second place in Photography. Ivy Rodriguez took fifth place in Film Production. And Shayla Trautner took first place in Literature. MSBA recognized you. As a group, you received the Missouri School Words Association 2020 Governance Team Award. So this may be an example of where we get to recognize the people who are actually in the room. So congratulations. And then Board President Kimberly Lee received her Advanced Certification Recognition from MSBA. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Kirby. At the time, we will move on to public comments. Thank you. During this part of our agenda, we will receive public comments from persons attending in person, followed by comments received in writing by the noon deadline today. There will be a three-minute time limit for individual comments and 15-minute total time limit for all comments combined. Board Secretary will monitor the time. So our first, I believe, and our only in-person is from Chad Bloomberg. If you could please come to the speaker's table. We're going to ask that you state your name and address.
My name is Chad Bloomberg. My address is 4604 North Montebello Drive in Riverside. Hearing my comments tonight. And she knew how to try to get, you know, schools reopened and better and keep us in school. And she told me that she wanted to be in school. She wants to show her friends and her parents back there. So we're glad to have in-person schools. And the rule flies as a lie for important and anything is done. Many studies show that elementary students are largely unaffected by the coronavirus and do not transmit it to adults. But our policies and warnings of future closures mistakenly rely on general community health. An increase in community cases should not control our plans to in-person schools. Only school risk should drive those decisions. The word flu has become political, but facts not politics should control. The Law School Journal reports last week that children aged five to 14 have four to five times greater health risks than flu and COVID. Twenty-eight children aged 15 or under have died from COVID. We all wish that was zero, but depending on the year, the flu is five times deadly. It is extrins- the quote, "It is extremely difficult to find any instance anywhere in the world of a child under 15 transmitting to a teacher in school." Further, the CDC reported a total of 576 children, 76 children, who were hospitalized from COVID. In comparison, to adopt sweeping policy reforms like those implemented for COVID. And by doing so, the district's messaging and policies should suggest to parents and teachers that COVID is more dangerous than the flu. But the opposite is true, and I think the district should act and communicate accordingly. Summer school appears to have been a success, and the district should be applauded for that. There was also not a single positive case for elementary students. It was not expressly stated on the recent answers about our reopening plan webpage, but it should have been stated. And I say that because roughly 28% of elementary parents voted for remote learning. But those results suggest a misunderstanding of the risks. That's why I asked the district to lead in sheer studies showing the incredibly low risk that COVID-19 presents in elementary school. In the coming months, we will likely see a high school student or an adult contract COVID. But a positive test should not be confused with evidence of a substantial risk. So when that happens, and probably will, I hope the district stands strong to keep our schools open. Finally, any future decisions on schools need to be based on school risks, not community risks.
Five seconds.
We should keep our kids in school even if the numbers rise because it is safe to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one other comment that came in by the noon deadline today. This comes from Dr. Susan Storm, reads as follows. Dear Board and Dr. Cowan, as a local pediatrician of 31 years and managing partner of Pediatric Care North, I am writing on behalf of the students in the Park Hill School District. We pediatricians are greatly concerned about the safety and inability of social distancing of football games scheduled as early as August 18th and other games scheduled prior to reopening and athletic practices that are continuing in spite of the rising numbers of COVID-19. This allows for the perfect incubation time before school reopens. Our practice alone cares for 35,000 of the children in the Northland, many of them attending the Park Hill School District. We have seen a spike of cases after summer activities and athletic practices preparing for our fall sports activities. We have seen positive cases of students that have been in football and have been desperate to be cleared to play. These students often are more concerned about playing, interested in the short term, not thinking of their long-term health. This is a liability for the district as well if these students continue to play. If the Park Hill District wants to make its successfully, successful start to starting school on September 8, precautions should be taken, and we should practice social distancing now. Football practice and games of students in cheer, band, colored guard, and parents make social distancing impossible. We've seen positive cases and clinically obvious cases in all of these student activity areas. We look at rising numbers and data, but what the public does not realize is that parents and students are choosing to not be tested so they can play and proceed. Take the positive numbers and double them. Our data in Platte County that we see is lower than the actual ill COVID numbers. Asymptomatic students are spreading it like wildfire to adults. We are seeing positives in children of positive parents daily. Due to the difficulty in getting testing, swabs, and results back, there is still great delay in results. Parents are opting to not test their children against our recommendations. Some parents are placing football before health. But again, I want to emphasize that there will be a hotbed of COVID if games proceed. Park Hill has always been a very progressive district. Both my children, Shane and Sarah, attended Park Hill, always getting an excellent education. I am proud to say they attended Park Hill High School. My son Shane just graduated this spring with his MD, and my daughter Sarah is currently in medical school now. Park Hill academics gave them their college preparedness. We need to put our student safety and education first and respect the science that says social distance now. Follow Dr. Fauci and the infectious disease experts. You cannot tackle each other and social distance. You cannot control children and large events. Please continue to be progressive as a district and say no to games and practices now. Susan Storm, MD, Managing Partner of Pediatric Care North. We will move on to item five, consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda includes items 5.1 through 5.14. Dr. Cowan, are there any items that need to be highlighted?
I do not have any at this time, thank you. I'm sorry, let me turn that back, don't push that. No, I do not have any, thank you.
Thank you. Board, any questions for Dr. Cowan? Seeing none, I will need a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.14 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Klein and a second by Mr. Fain to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries seven zero. All right, item 6.2 is approval of the emergency purchase of supplies. These are for face masks. I need a motion and a second to approve the emergency purchase of face masks as presented. Any discussion?
I guess one that I just noticed here. It says that their size could fit pre-k to 12. I'm guessing that's not one mask fitting all of those ranges, but different sizes. Okay, Miss Ma.
Any other, any other questions? I have a motion from Ms. Bowlin and a second by Mr. Klein to approve the emergency purchase of face masks as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven zero. Item 6.3 is approval of the emergency purchase of supplies. This is, I believe, for Plexiglas shields. Again, I will need a motion and a second to approve the emergency purchase of Plexiglas shields as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? I have a motion from Ms. Bowlin and a second by Mrs. Newberger to approve the emergency purchase of Plexiglas shields as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And our last one here, 6.4. Approval of purchase of the Heidemann units of study virtual teaching resources. This is a request to waive the first read. I will need a motion and a second to approve the purchase of Heidemann units of study virtual teaching resources as presented.
Second.
I'll pick someone. All right, any discussion? And Dr. Cowan, do you want to address the first question?
Yeah, I just appreciate this on the, on the way first read. I did communicate with you guys on Sunday and then again after that about this topic. I think the thing that works out about on this one is the ability to spend less money and be able to access and divide a resource for all of our students in K-35 versus just a limited number of students. And this is in a direct alignment. This is the, the system that we use, and it really will help us keep that alignment that we're looking for whether our students are online, in class, or in a hybrid model. Whatever, whatever model we're in, we're all going to be pacing, which is a really important thing for us as we look at the growth of our students. So thank you for this consideration. So Dr. Cowan, the intent is that this will lead to both our students who are in face-to-face and virtual and whatever. Okay. Regardless of format, just now. Kind of off-topic, but this is just reading and writing. Is there similar or? We already have the other resources and stem scopes and those other items that we have from up and up the areas. But we didn't, we were using, going to use edgenuity, but it was only going to be, they only, they charged by the student. And so it was going to become one very pricey. It was close, but at that time, we did not have the, I mean, could not guarantee they could have this ready. So we wanted to have something in our pockets, and then they contacted us late, late last week and let us know that it would be ready to go. This is the first choice. This is, and it's a much more financially wise choice for us, for all students.
Any other questions? Let's try that again. Any other questions? I have a motion from Ms. Bowlin and a second by Mr. Klein to approve the Heidemann virtual teaching resources as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries seven zero. All right, we will move on to item 7.1, our 2020 tax rate. I think Dr. Kelly is going to talk us through this.
Good evening. Each year, we use the first meeting in August as a prelude to the information that you'll need for, to conduct your tax rate hearing, which is now scheduled for our second meeting, which is on August 27. The tax rate information, this presentation is on your slides. Is there a way we can switch this over?
We can, we can switch devices if we need to. Well, Dr. Kelly's looking at this. We understand that we're having some sound problems possibly on our, on our YouTube. On the live, we're working on that to try to get that better for you. We've been working on this all week, tried to improve our sound. And apparently, we still have work to do. So thank you for your graciousness on that, and we'll do the very best that we possibly can as we continue to work on this. Okay? Having difficulty hearing you in this presentation, so.
Hearing me?
Yes, sir, that's what I'm hearing. We can hear you here, but I'm not sure they can hear you out on YouTube. So we'll keep trying and improve your speech as we go.
Do you think we need to talk louder?
I think you'll be fine.
Okay. So the tax rate slides that you had had access to is what I'm presenting now. The number that we look forward to each year that drives so much of our budget is the aggregate assessed valuation that's provided from the county clerk and the county assessor. And so that number appears here in the middle of this screen, which is at $1.8 billion of aggregate assessed valuation. While that is a very large number by any standard, it is not as high as we anticipated. And so I'll talk through the effects of that through the remainder of this presentation. Again, this information is all for your use. It's also coincides with the information that we provide to the public as a notice to the public of the hearing that is scheduled for August 27. So all of this information is also included in the notices to the public so that they can be informed of that meeting on August 27. So this is a history, 15-year history of the aggregate assessed valuation. Yes?
The last statement in the previous slide. Any changes provided to Platte County Assessor prior to September 1st may require the Board of Education to change this information. I don't recall seeing that before. Am I doing, just miss it before, or is it very much in flux issue?
It actually has been in flux. I think we're solid now, and historically, by this date, it has been fairly solid. What I think we're after there is that the board, we have to post a proposed tax rate. And so the board obviously has the authority to set it at a rate really lower than that. And so what I post as a notice or in this presentation doesn't bind us, or bind you to voting on the tax levy that is proposed here. So you still have a couple of weeks to make any adjustments that you would want in the tax levy as a board. So that's what we're there is in getting at, is that there could be information that wasn't in the notices, but it doesn't bind you to a specific tax rate.
Great, great.
Yeah. And so what you will notice is that, that this growth is fairly small for Park Hill, particularly over the last 15 years. Only in that year in which you see 2011, 2012. And obviously, we know the economic conditions nationally and statewide. Back then, we see a lower growth from one year over the next. In fact, in 2011, 2012, it was a negative assessed valuation number. And so we're not dealing with that. But the, the growth actually is fairly small this year, which is at .32, which is the number in the bottom right-hand corner. I've highlighted some of the, the numbers that, that's driving this. You can see really in the middle there is a positive number in which the residential growth has increased by 30 million in assessed valuation. And so that is driving up the tax base, but it is not enough or just enough to overcome the drops in commercial and in personal property. And so those assessed valuations having dropped, the net effect then is that our overall assessed valuation only increased by .3%. We had budgeted for two and a half percent, and so I will show you the effects of that. We've had conversation with the assessor about was there any sort, anything systematic that caused this? Is there some, what is the, you know, what was driving some of this? Obviously, the growth in residential is pretty obvious. We can see that just driving through our communities. But the drop in commercial wasn't, isn't attributed to a reassessment or some systematic process or a change in a, in a calculation formula. But rather, I think there was some high-profile commercial properties such as Zona Rosa. The assessor mentioned American Dairy Farmers, for example. Those are items that were on the books and in the tax base on, on January 1st, 2019, but then not on January 1st, 2020. None of this, just keep in mind, has anything to do with the coronavirus because these were all properties as they were assessed on January 1st. So we won't see the direct or indirect effects of coronavirus on property values until perhaps this time next year.
But this is, this is current, not new home construction or anything like that? So this is as of January 1st?
Right.
Okay.
These are the values as of January 1. So with that, that has an effect on, has a similar effect as if we had had a negative reassessment. And so the Hancock Amendment will kick in, in which you'll see that, whether it's due to reassessment or just a downward trend on your assessment of properties, that then allows the board to increase the, or the state auditor will increase the tax rate ceiling, and then will in turn allow the board to begin to make up some of that lost assessed valuation and the taxes through adjustment of the tax rate. So just with the reassessment or the negative assessment drop, that then triggers that tax levy increase. You can see that the change in this bottom number, the 1.88 billion, really can only be attributed to three things. One is new growth, and that was largely residential, changes in personal property, and then the changes on existing property. So this brings to mind the impact of the Hancock Amendment. And so just as a reminder, the, the voters actually have the ultimate authority on setting our operating tax rate. And so the last time they did that and resulting in a change was in 2002, and they established a maximum authorized levy of $499. and they established a maximum authorized levy of 499. That regardless of reassessments or regardless of really anything, there's nothing the state auditor or the local board can do to increase that without a vote of the people. So the board does not have the authority, nor does the state auditor, through the application of the Hancock, have the amendment allow. Neither of those groups is allowed to increase that above the 499. We actually have not had a tax levy at or above that for a decade and a half. So we've been well under the maximum voter allowed for some time. The tax rate ceiling then is adjusted every year based upon reassessment, and so that's a change. You can see that the state auditor has stepped in at this point based upon that, that drop in assessed valuation of primarily commercial and increase the tax rate ceiling. Again, it's not above our maximum authorized levy, but does increase it, you can see, by about eight cents. Then the actual levy then is the, is really the jurisdiction of the board, and that's what you will vote on next. We are in two weeks at the next meeting. And so you set that at 468.27 a year ago, and then you'll set a new rate that can be no higher than the tax rate ceiling. So that is, that's really the only boundary you have is that it can't be higher than what the state auditor has set the ceiling. And then the debt services levy works independently. We set that at 71.28 last year. Based upon our actual debt payments coming up in the next two years, the state auditor has set a ceiling for that at a slightly lower, meaning that regardless of reassessment or anything like that, that doesn't have an impact on the debt service levy. But we don't have enough debt to justify a 71-cent levy at this point. So the state auditor says that you can set it no higher than that 69.44, which is a real small number there. So a year ago, this is, this was the data that was presented and ultimately then voted on. The ceiling was 468.27. Our ceiling in debt service was much higher. You might remember then that we, we taxed at that ceiling, that operating levy ceiling, and then dropped the debt service to 71.28 from the ceiling. As comparison to other school districts, there was a change in this, you know, for a long period of time. We were 11 out of 12, 11 out of 12, and those 12 school districts are the greater Kansas City, Missouri suburban school districts. And we've been comparing ourselves on levy to them since 2002. And so you might remember that we, we were holding firmly on this 11 out of 12 in terms of the 11th highest or second lowest. The reassessment that occurred in Jackson County last year changed that a bit. And so, and it moved Lee Summit and Grand View's levies, total levies downward due to the Hancock Amendment for them. And so you can see where we sit as of our tax levy from a year ago. That same period of time, if you look at Park Hill's levy, total levy compared to the average of those school districts, the average is in the orange. Again, this significant drop last year was due to that, that mass reassessment in Jackson County. But ours has generally been really lower and significantly so. And the impact for the homeowner, and this information is in our budget, but the impact on the homeowner, you can see that if, if you freeze the market value and it's assessed in a consistent way from county to county, on average, for the median home value in Park Hill, the tax bill would be 2,0639. The average in the Kansas City area for that same home in other school districts would be 2,700. If you were just to pull the debt service part of the tax levy out, you can see that we've been, are and consistently have been the lowest debt service tax levy, and we've been able to do that and actually have no, several no-tax increase bond issues over the last decade and a half. And so we are, still hold that as the lowest overall debt service tax levy. And then I would anticipate will continue as we move forward. So as I mentioned before, the tax levy ceilings did change from the state auditor, and so there has been an adjustment. And so the proposal that we're asking tonight for you to consider is when we set the tax rate in the, at the next meeting would be setting these tax rates, which would be overall no change. Actually, that's on this slide here. No change from last year in the total, but moving some of the tax levy between the debt service and operating. And so the, the net effect to the taxpayer would be no change in the overall tax levy. And despite the fact that we would be increasing the operating part of that, it's still, that negative assessment still is not going to make up for the lost revenue here from a budgeting perspective. And so we had set a budget based upon anticipation of two and a half percent increase, which would have meant that our assessed valuation would have been 1.9 billion. You see that we came in significantly under that. And so we also anticipated no change in the operating levy. This would pull 7.8 cents from debt service and move it to operating to begin to make up for some of that loss. The Hancock Amendment allows us to do that. The, now the anticipated revenue in operating would be about 1 million less than we budgeted and in debt service about 1.2. And that's the effect of pulling, that's a bigger number in debt service because we pulled some of that levy out of debt service and back into operating. So the net effect overall for revenue on the budget would be about 2.3 million dollars. So as I mentioned, these, these, this information and this data has been provided to the public in notices. And so those will be posted for the next two weeks, and then we will have, will conduct a tax rate hearing planned for August 27th.
Dr. Kelly, could you go back to the previous slide, please?
So, Brian, you may need to turn on your microphone.
So at the bottom of that slide, it talks about the assumptions, 96.6 collection rate. And what's the other one? 1.6 counting collection fee.
Right.
Is that what we, is that standard? Is that what we're seeing?
The 1.6 is standard, and then this is a three-year history. So that would be, you know, our collection rate last year was pretty low. What, what that does is it then increases the delinquent tax the following year. So assuming that you'll at some point get that, those delinquent taxes. So the 96.6 could potentially be made up in a future year, like the following year.
Could you just share the rationale of moving funds from debt service into operations? I just want to make sure I understand.
Yeah, so we're not moving funds. We would be moving the tax levy, yes. And so we're not allowed to move funds out of debt service once they've been collected. But the, the overall impact is that if the net effect is to not increase the overall levy, then we, we have additional room in the debt service by which we have plenty there to pay future debt. And so for us, because the state auditor allowed us to increase our ceiling in the operating, the only place to get that and not cause an overall tax increase would be to pull it out of debts. The net effect is to tax at the ceiling. And to do so, rather than raising the overall tax levy, we pull that out of debt service and then out of the debt service tax levy and then up into the operating. And we did exactly the opposite a year ago, and then, if you might remember, in order to keep the overall levy the same, we did exactly the opposite. Our levy actually was forced to go down because of reassessment. And so we moved, we, we, we did adjust it, but then moved all of it to debt service. So it's, it's 180 degrees from what we did a year ago.
And so all of this does not take into consideration our current environment with COVID. We certainly see some expenditures going up.
Right.
We see, I'm worried about retail as a sector of our commercial receipts. I know that's not reflected here, but as you're thinking forward, is, is there any information that you're getting or that? Because you are good, you're very good at forecasting forward. I know it's too early to tell, but this is what we see happening with retail in our community.
Yeah, I don't think this is a good sign because it doesn't include COVID. So it would have, I guess, had, if we had had a typical year like the two and a half percent, then that would have been, you know, of course, what we would have expected, but for this to happen and then to also now have to anticipate COVID and all the effects that are going to come with that. So I really had anticipated this kind of information coming a year from now. And now, so this is going to come, whatever's going to happen a year from now is going to compound on this. And so that's disappointing. You know, the other part of that is that, you know, we have been blessed, you know, you look at a slide like this. And, you know, for school districts in the Kansas City area, to think that we're complaining about a 0.3% increase, you know, only a 0.3% increase, that's very atypical for us. And we're talking in years in which we had, like last year, 7%, five years the year before, you know. So we've been very blessed not to have gone through this. So it appears that we'll probably end this for at least a couple of years.
Dr. Kelly, one of the things that always concerns me about the way that we have to do this budgeting and setting the taxes, it seems to me we have to set, we set the budget, and then we find out later how much money we're going to get. And it's always concerned me when we did this, of, you know, outside of your excellent forecasting, what if? And I think we've hit a what-if here. So I'm guessing we are, my supposition would be then that we would also be looking at some changes to the budget to match this actuality then? Or are we considering that we're going to just run a deficit budget this year?
Well, we were running a deficit budget anyway.
That is true.
Yes. But that was using fund balances, and so it wasn't as if we didn't have the money and had not, you know, intentionally set that up that way and to not have a negative impact. But it will get, it'll get us into questions, I think, you know, once we get schools started and, you know, and hit some kind of a stride in terms of what the expenditures are going to be.
Because that is the other issue. We don't know how much this new school program is going to truly end up costing us.
Right, right. You know, we have, we do have some definitive numbers that you've just approved tonight, and then some in the last couple of meetings of just things that we would not have otherwise needed or ordered. And so that's true. Now, we actually have some staffing things that we're working on in terms of providing, you know, different modalities. And so, you know, once we kind of collect all that, this is where the fund balance, you know, that, that we've had and carried for so many years. I mean, we certainly struck a rainy day, and so the fund balance is, which is, is a good position for us. You know, I don't see anything sort of imminent emergency transpiring this year, but I think as we look at future years, next year and then following at, at fund balances, those are where we're going to have to make some changes long-term.
Dr. Kelly, we're going to set our debt service at 63 cents.
Right.
Don't we only need like 61 cents to actually pay our bills? So are we still paying off a little bit more debt than? You'll be having a little cushion in our, in our debt service levy to what we actually have to pay in debt?
Yeah, all I would say that 61 was what it had always been. So what the minimum amount would possibly be might be less than 61 cents. But to you, I think what you're getting after is that there is actually a couple of cents in there more than what we had from a number of years that 61 cents had just stood. So maybe the number to look at would be the, the, the fact that we could set it up to 69 cents, 68 cents, and you're voluntarily reducing it back down to 63. So the state auditor would have allowed us to set it at 68. That would have been the maximum. I don't really have the number on what the minimum amount would be, but I would imagine it's less than that 61 cents.
We may need that next year, I suppose.
Yeah, right. Yeah, and all of this goes back to really, the objective is working backwards from no change in the tax levy. So these, these numbers are all working backwards from five, even the last two years has been no change here. And so that's, has caused us to move the tax levies around, and that's how we hit those numbers. This is also, you would want to be very cautious about taking a voluntary reduction in the operating levy this year, so taxing below that ceiling, and that is because that would be a two-year commitment. Some years ago, the legislator said that in a reassessment year, you reassess and the Hancock gets applied to the actual levy and not the ceiling. And so if you were to take a voluntary levy and then reassessments are applied next year, the change is applied to the, the voluntary reduction and not the actual ceiling. So this would not be a good year to, to take, and I'm not, we're not proposing that. But this is a little bit of a twist that we would see in typical years that it, that this would not be a, even number of years are not good years to take voluntary reductions in the operating levy.
Any other, any other questions for Dr. Kelly? All right, thank you. We will move on to item 7.2, our reopening update. And Dr. Kelly, are you going to start us off on this?
Yeah, and we'll have just a couple of presenters on this. We're trying to deploy as many musical chairs this time. Tammy's back from vacation. We're thrilled to see her back to assist us on this process. And then Dr. Campbell is going to assist us also as we go through. So we'll hit these first few, and Tammy wouldn't mind just going on to the second one. I think part of this is, we just want to continue to provide these updates. There are just so many changes that happen as we go through this process, and it's just important that we continue to provide updates of where we are as we go forward. And I will go through these, but I wanted Tammy to be here in case there were some very specific questions, particularly around items around our health and the things that we're seeing. And so on the data you see there, we are receiving, this is Platte County data. This is not the Kansas City, Missouri. This is just the Platte County data that we have. And it shows what it is on a 14-day rolling average is what we look at. We do get this data on a Tuesday and a Friday. We've been posting the Friday. And so as you look at that, it looks like it went down a little bit from the last time to 11.8. That was as of last Friday. However, we got our Tuesday data in, and so as of August 11th, that number is actually 13.2. It has increased. And so that is just a function of the, of the data that we have. And the reason with the 14-day average is used, one, that's an incubation period, but also there's so many factors at play to this testing for when things come in, positive tests, negative tests, and all that. On a seven-day window, you just don't get as much of the range. On 14, you get a better view of what's actually there. And so they seem to get their positive tests faster than the negative. So you may see a, a high and then a low on these different numbers, and that's why the fluctuation that you're seeing on that as we go forward. We also want to share with you on this past summer, as we finished up our summer school and also in looking up our summer activities, just what happened as we went forward. And we did have cases, and we did have staff. We had four staff members, and when we say two in summer school, that means two of those staff members were not related to the summer school at all. And that, and actually, one didn't even attend summer school, but it is a staff member that we're aware of as we go forward. On our students, we did have 16 positive cases. Those are all high school age students. And that is pretty much going back to when we started opening up our practices and our trainings is where that's happening. We wanted to talk about the people that were quarantined as a precaution, and we broke this down because I think it tells a different story too. For the full 14 days, we had a total of 44. That does include one classroom that was out for the full 14 days there as we move forward. And then the other ones are different, in different groups as we looked at that. And I'll let Tammy provide some commentary to that in just a second. For the one to three day, we had class out for one to three days. The test came back negative, so we brought the students back immediately. And then the lesson was, one day, actually was about two hours. immediately. And then the lesson was, that one day actually was about two hours. It was at one of our middle schools. And there were forty-eight students because there's forty-eight students on a team. And so we got that information back very quickly. So Tammy, is there anything that you'd like to add to this, to add some more information? Or any questions you might have for Tammy?
Yeah. Tammy, was the sixteen high school students?
You're going to have to speak up and speak into the mic.
So the sixteen high school students, was that a cluster or were those independent cases?
Those were individual cases. We had a few that were connected, but most of those were individual.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So that forty-eight is related to like one other person, their test coming back negative? We didn't get forty-eight tests back negative in a day?
Correct. It was one person. And, but that's the people we had to quarantine. So they were quarantined because of that. And so that's what's going on.
One test came back negative.
One test came back negative. That's what we're trying to clarify, and it's just hard to do.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
How much interaction did the health department, I assume this is Kansas City, Missouri Health Department that we were working with?
The black one.
Well, the...
We do both. So the one that was the forty-eight day, that was, that was Kansas City.
Okay. And...
Or the forty-eight students that were quarantined, that was Kansas City, yes.
And what about the, the full fourteen days with that?
The full fourteen days was also Kansas City Health Department?
Have they made any indication that they're not going to give us that data in the future or, and help us with that? Okay. So as far as we know, they're going to continue to operate the way they've been operating?
Yes.
And I'm also going to make a supposition here, since our high school students were all in virtual classes, that the sixteen students that had positive cases were in activities of some sort, not classroom.
Yes. So those sixteen high school students, those were from after June first, when we started conditioning.
How many kids do we have doing conditioning?
I have no idea on that number. A large number.
A large number.
A large number.
A large number of students.
So percentage-wise?
Dr. Beck.
Three to four hundred.
We have three to four hundred.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Beck.
So percentage-wise, that's still a little number.
Yes.
That's a little number, yes. Any other questions on that? Tammy, let's go through the next slide. As we look at our public health updates, I shared with you last time that we are working with the Mid-America Regional Council, and they're working with Children's Mercy, Kansas City Health, and the Public Health of Platte County together. They're working on trying to identify some gating criteria for us. They're in those stages of trying to figure out what that is as it, as it moves ahead. And the reason we really would like to have that is we need to know when you move from one modality to the next as it goes forward. And so I have a meeting tomorrow with the Platte County and the Platte County Superintendents. And then we'll try to set up a meeting also with Kansas City, Missouri, Tammy and myself, to make sure we're all on the same page as we go forward. I think the challenge is, as we've mentioned before, seventeen of our schools are under the Kansas City Health Department and under Kansas City regulations. And you might have noticed today that Mayor Lucas extended his orders through January the fourteenth, I believe is the correct number, regarding masks, social distancing, capacities, those type of things. And so that impacts us directly. And so we have kind of an interesting balance between those two. They work well together. And we try to work with our Northland Schools on that, too. So we're hoping to have more information for you as we try to set those gating criterias. One of the challenges is always around data and the timeliness of data and what you can get. I think you read in Dr. Storm's, what she shared was just the difficulty with getting tests or having the test done. And so it's kind of an interesting phenomenon that we're in. I will share that it's challenging at times to get this as we move forward. But I think they're working as hard as they can. I think why working for Mark works well for us also on this, excuse me, is one of our challenges is, we want to just look at our little world right here that is Park Hill. But unfortunately, that is not our world. I know that, I was talking to Dr. Gregor, and probably thirty percent of our staff don't live here. They drive in from someplace else. So they're bringing in and going back out every day. We know that families in our community work downtown in Kansas City, they work in Johnson County, they work in Liberty, they work north, and then they come back in. So we truly are a Kansas City metro area. And what we don't want is one set of criteria for one school district and a different set of criteria for another school district as we're moving forward. So we have our fingers crossed, I think is the best we can say on this. But I do think it's going to be an important piece that we can get that organized and back through Mark as we go forward.
Do we have any clue what a timeline looks like on that?
They're working, they think they're working really hard and really fast. And of course, we wanted it, you know, two months ago.
We had that conversation ten days ago, and there hasn't been any gain.
And I think that's the challenge is, is just trying to get this, because it's not, when Mark is coming together, they're coming together, Platte County Health Department, Clay County Health Department, Jackson County Health Department, Kansas City, Missouri Health Department, and the Cass County Health Department. And so we're trying to get everybody to play well together. And then we're also trying to work, it shouldn't be this on one side of the state line, and then something else on the other side of the state line. We are a metro area. And so trying to get them to play together is what Mark is working on right now. Love to have it.
So does Mark have any conversations with, on the Kansas side then? Yes?
Yes, ma'am, they do. Sorry. Tammy, can you take, while I take a drink? Sorry.
I just have a question on, on the, what recommendations we're going to give to our, our families with getting a test? If there, for example, back here are the summer cases where you thought there was a positive case and you had people going for testing, are we giving our parents a clear recommendation? What, what are we telling them? Or do we just say you have to be tested? Because I understand from others, it's difficult to find out where to get a test from. And once you get it, be time to get it back.
So if we have an individual who is exhibiting symptoms, and we are wanting them to go get tests, we will have them call their physician first, because a lot of where they go depends on their insurance. And so we want to help them get to the right place. We also will give them a lot of lists of places that we know may take them. But getting a test has been very challenging. For our students that we send home because they've had a direct exposure, we are just asking them, we're working with the health departments, and we're asking them to quarantine for fourteen days. So they necessarily do not need to get a test unless they start exhibiting symptoms.
Dr. Coward, I've been following this pretty closely, and I'm very concerned about the positivity using tying the opening and closing of schools to that positivity, because that is normally used when you can get a random set of testing. But right now, all the testing is on the highly symptomatic. I know that some kids have been sick, been to the doctor multiple times, and not given a COVID test because they did not have a fever.
Correct.
So I'm very concerned that we would tie all of our, our, our school to, to that rate.
Correct. Which is why, what Mark is also looking at is not just one data point, but two data points. So what is that rate per one hundred thousand, which gives you a much better number. Also, the thing we would look at is what is the trend line? Are you decreasing or increasing as it goes forward? And you guys are good vultures, people understand what the data points are that you need and the trend lines you're looking for. And I think that's the piece that I think Mark is, can help us with the most. The other thing that Mark can help us with the most is, we are, almost every district in the K C Metro area is dealing with multiple health departments. Very few are just dealing with one. And so that coordination between those health departments is going to be critical for us as we move to the future. And I think that's the piece that I don't matter.
Plus, and I don't know how to ask this, but I, I would think the opposite, because like you just said, unless you have symptoms, people aren't getting tested. So there could be a lot of people that have it that aren't getting tested because there aren't tests available. So you really don't know, that, that could be a low number.
And that's the problem with the data.
I think that's one of the challenges. I know that the, I was on a conference call, and Mr. Mons says you were there, as they talked about the testing issue, and they were trying to come up something just to get more tests available in the thirty days that it's going forward. And I think that's, those are just the challenges when we talk about the data, is trying to find what is that real data point we're used to and, and we need to find. It's a very, it's concerning to us because it, it may lower the number, it could raise the number. And it's, it goes both directions on that. Right now, that's the number that we have, and it's only a data point that I've got right now.
How do we handle like a flu outbreak? How is that handled right now?
So normally, normally in the past, if we would have a flu outbreak, we would work with the health department. And normally, if we're at about five, anywhere from five to ten percent of our student population and staff in the building as well, out with the flu, we would start working with the health department.
So we can still do that?
We can still do that, and we would. We'd look at student absenteeism. I think the other challenge here, we, we spend a lot of our times talking about students. And frankly, I'm worried about our staff. They are the ones that are going to become ill. And if I don't have enough staff to teach, we're not going to have school. And that is why they are highly concerned about their return as they go forward. So, yes, the science says that our younger students are not at high levels, and that's why we're having school every day for our students at K through five. However, their teachers are not the same. And so what does that look like when they're placed in these situations? So what is it we need to do to keep them safe as they move ahead, too? I think the other thing that is challenging on this is, as we look at flu as a thing, and we've heard many times deaths in flu and everything else, I, it is a COVID, this is just, it's a coronavirus. This is a different coronavirus. It's a novel coronavirus. It seems to be changing. It's interesting to kind of watch it and see where it's going as we move forward. And as we do that, I think it's hard not to keep in mind, we've had over two hundred thousand deaths in just three months. That is an astounding number nationwide that we cannot ignore as we go forward. And so for me, the challenge is making sure that I am being cognizant of our community and our community needs and desires. At the same time, I am responsible for the safety and the care of the children and the staff here. And so as we do that as a team, I think that's one of the things that's probably the most challenging for all of us. There's not a person sitting here that would not love to just be saying, hey, we're opening school on the twenty-fourth, and we're good to go, and we are rolling. I can't think of anything more difficult than this year than going through this year, frankly. And I think the challenging part is the uncertainty. We simply don't know. I, right before this meeting, I saw that Texas is over twenty-five percent, and that's a ridiculous number. And I don't know what the challenge is on that as they go forward, because they've been dealing with that for quite some time. And there's data on all sites. And I can get as much confidence data as I want for your, whatever the biases that you may have, whether it's real or not real. Some people have told me that it's going to end after November the fourth. Some people say it's going to end this summer. I don't have that answer. I'm certainly not a medical professional. And so we're leaning on, particularly Children's Mercy has been our, has been very helpful to us, and they are really a guiding piece in supporting the work at Mark. And so I, I want us to be fully aware of everything. And there are so many different opinions and so many different thoughts. And trying to find the right answer, I, is frankly feels impossible right now, to be very honest with you. Whatever decision we make, we're going to make some people very happy, we're going to make some other people very unhappy. And we're going to try to do the best we can. To me, our most important thing is, how can we educate our students? Because they left last, in the fourth quarter in this school, how can we educate our students the best? I'm worried about our students in second grade, because it's second grade. It's second grade. And between second and third grade, kindergarten, first, second, you're learning to read. After that, you're reading to learn. And so these are key points that we cannot lose sight of, is what can we do? And then how do we do this in the safest manner possible? I would say while we're on this slide, I think there's a lot of, we've had a lot of feedback that you should tell us everything and every student and every staff that's positive, and who's going on, and they're not being transparent. This is HIPAA information. This is personal information about their illness. So if you were the person that tested positive, and we've had some, we have to keep that so that it is not identifiable. So we have shared directly to those that have had a direct exposure, and then we have shared with the building that has been impacted. We have not posted this on anything else.
Are we going to continue to kind of share in this manner?
Yes.
I don't want to know who, but I do want to know information like this.
Yes. And this we can do, and we will continue to share. We're just trying to figure out what's the best format to do it, and, and what is informative as we go forward. Tammy, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Have you heard anything more about testing? Are they, is it going to become more scarce, more available, or is it just going to be this way forever, or?
That, that's a great question, and it's a hard one to answer. I've heard we were getting a lot more testing, a lot more tests available. But when you talk to area physicians, they're saying they're not getting it. So I think right now, testing is pretty scarce, unless you're pretty sick.
Tammy, I'm sorry, Mr. Mons says.
I know that if you're in a high-risk group, you can get a test.
Yes. Yes. And we've said, we've asked some people, and we've asked some people here that have gone outside of our area just to get those tests, to try to get those done. So it's just that delay that's really difficult on some of these. It really, really is. Tammy, thank you. We'll move ahead to these other updates around our enrollment. We did extend our enrollment period after our last meeting, giving our parents every option. We also sent out an email to every family, and you probably received some of those, that said, your child has signed up for face-to-face, or your child will sign up for, I'm sorry, in-person or online. Interestingly enough, that brought a lot of people to the front that hadn't realized that they hadn't done anything. And so I believe we handed over a thousand calls and made six hundred and some odd direct inputs into the system-based demand. It is a lot. It is impacting, is now trying to finish our master schedules, and it's kind of driving that work. But I'm so glad we did it, because if we hadn't done that, that would have happened on the first day of school. And then that would have been a disaster. So I'm so glad we did that. So Dr. Campbell, why don't you go through these next slides around our enrollment, and then just some general process questions that are happening.
Sure. Yeah. Good evening, everybody. So Dr. Coward set this up nicely on kind of what we've done since we saw you last. So thankfully, we did extend that deadline. We worked for about seventy-two hours. We were basically running a call center out of our side of the building. And it did produce a lot of activity, which we think is great because it actually turned in the direction, if you remember this data from the last time that I showed it to you, we were at twenty-five percent. So it actually gained us a net about one point five percent of, of families actually choosing to go online completely. We had families going both directions. But many people got those emails, got those phone calls, and found out, oh, my gosh, I'm currently slated to have my student in person, and now I'd rather than be an online student. So they contacted our office, we worked with them. And as Dr. Coward said, we, we operated with several hundred, pushing a thousand different requests through emails and phone calls that we did in those, those three days. So we closed that down last Thursday at five o'clock, and this is the result that we have currently. We still have had people working with buildings, and we have a strict appeal process that we have categories in which if there are special circumstances, we will look at that. But those are very, very small in nature. I broke down this data a little bit, so you can see it at different grade spans and also by building. So I'll go through this pretty quickly. We actually have higher percentages of online students enrolled in the elementary and middle levels, where we have a little bit lower in high school, which again, was a theory that a few weeks ago that I missed. I thought that we would probably have more at the high school, just because they're familiar with online classes, they might be more comfortable, childcare, those type of things. And that just didn't turn out to be true in terms of this data. So you see that it's fairly evenly distributed, but slightly a few more at the elementary and middle level. By building, we see that across all of our buildings, that there's not a huge discrepancy. We do see a couple that are as low as in the low twenties in terms of students that are enrolled online. And our highest is Plaza and Hopewell. They're in the low to mid thirties in terms of percentages. One of the things that we noticed in the data as we looked at demographics was that, at least on paper, we don't seem to see an equity issue. So for instance, we actually have higher percentages of free to reduce lunch students. So for instance, we actually have higher percentages of free-to-reduce lunch students that are signed up for online than our overall population. And that's the same for our students of color. So at least on paper, we see that there is what appears to not be some sort of selection bias that's going on in that direction. I will say that we're looking at, you know, every school is looking at that roster and looking for those highest need kids that have specifically signed up for online to already start asking, what can we do to help support this student and this family? Ms. Ball?
That's kind of where I was going to get. If you, that's going on at the building level?
That's going on at the building level. So I know that already that started in the health rooms. So I know that the health rooms, the nurses were back this week, and they were going through those lists line by line of all those students that had signed up in those individual schools for, online specifically, to look at those first. But also to see those students that are coming to them that are in face, in face-to-face mode, in-person. We have some students that parents and students are choosing to, to send their, their students. And we want to be extra cautious, because they might have additional health considerations that we want to make sure of. And I know that Tammy and her staff is going through that line by line. And they started that work this week, almost right after we had that deadline closed down. So when we get into this, the, the kind of summary on the enrollment, it's great that we took the voice of the customer and we stuck to allowing a few extra days. The residual impact of that is becoming felt. And it, all the way to today was just a headache of a day, because trying to do the work of our high school, middle school, and even our elementary school scheduling, but specifically the challenge of a high school master schedule, we are trying to take five months of work that typically happens between January and May, and do it in about five to seven days. And our folks at the building level are working tirelessly. And what we're asking for is just a little grace with that from our public, because we gave that extra couple of days to make sure that we had the right communication out and the people that we needed to know, are you signed up for online? Or are you signed up for in-person? But what that's done is it's set a couple timelines on top of each other that are making it very difficult for us to just get everything we need ready for school. So it's taken us a couple extra days. We're still working on that master schedule. And that's where, you know, having these additional days with our teachers in the buildings and so on, and additional time to, to communicate with our public, that we're working through those details as quickly as we can. It's just, building an online school with 3,200 students has been, it's difficult. And, and moving students around in a timeframe that's very, very, very condensed. Sniper?
So, so you're going to have, someone is going to have the tough conversation tomorrow. Tomorrow's when the teachers come back, because you know the first question is going to be, what am I teaching and what am I teaching?
So, yeah, we've already started, we've already started that process. So Dr. Redinger's office actually today contacted, and, and principals in Dr. Redinger's office, Dr. Dial, Dr. Bridewell, they've been working with our principals through this entire process. It threw us, you know, again, to where we had to be even more agile after last Thursday, because we had more students in the, or in the online program. That has created a, a challenge that is different than any other. And so we have contacted or been able to make notification of those teachers that are teaching all online. So they're aware of that. And then what we're working on is then, okay, so teachers come back tomorrow. What is it that you teach? We're working on probably next week in, in getting students rostered into those classes, because we have to almost redo that entire process in which we look at every single student's request, try to match them with those requests, and then build a schedule from that. Park Hill High School has to build a schedule now with 400 fewer students in their schedule, and they have to build 400 in an online program. So that's, that's the challenge we're working through. Yep. So the answers to these frequently asked questions, I'm going to go through a handful of them, and then I believe Dr. Coward's going to finish up with some of the things. These are new. I encourage anybody that potentially is watching this that wants to see what our frequently asked questions were before this, they can go to our website. And there were quite a few more covered in our last board meeting. We've taken the ones since we talked last week ago, Monday, just so that we have some updates on what those are that we see. One of the questions we saw was kind of this notion around, well, will the enrollment in Park Hill Online make in-person classes smaller? We were hearing that, well, I'm, I'm taking my student out, so that's helping the school. And in the classroom, that's not necessarily the case. And here's the reason why, is we don't have a, a new set of teachers. We have to redistribute and talk about how we restaff our teachers. It does happen, when you look back at those graphs, when you see a high percentage, if 25 to 30% of students are taken out of a building, that helps us in our commons areas, that helps us in arrival and dismissal, that helps us in our lunch processes, it helps us at recess, in our hybrid. It even takes it down further, because we've got half of the students there. So it helps us in the overall student population in terms of just mass gatherings. What we don't see, though, is a necessary, just complete reduction in class size. So it's very possible that our elementary class sizes will still be within those guidelines, and teachers will be working with all the precautions and the protocols that we put forward to make sure that we are doing everything we can with the plexiglass, masks, and social distancing to make sure that those things are occurring in the classroom to help keep students safe. Yeah?
Can you expand on that a little bit? I have gotten a lot of questions about that from staff.
Right.
But I know you said, as they come in, you're making available to take things out of their classrooms and store them to make more physical area and that, that kind of thing. Can you kind of address what all, because there's still a concern, I still have 28 kids in my class.
Right. Well, yeah, and, and I don't know if we'd have 28. I think that we, we're a little bit lower than that in the, in the normal range. However, one of the things that we are working with teachers is trying to maximize space in the classroom. So anything that we can get out of the classroom that wouldn't necessarily be, you know, necessity, then we're trying to get that out. I was involved in today with our new secondary teachers. And most of those classrooms are pretty sparse, and they've got desks. And unfortunately, we've got them where they are spaced, and, and that's not exactly the best collaborative environment that we, we want. But they are doing that in all buildings to try to make sure that those areas are as spaced as possible. And then where we can't, if we have tables or some other special situation in which we can't do that, that's where we're going to use the identifica, identification process for plexiglass where that would be needed. So in case we ever had any students that were facing in opposite directions or something like that.
Is there kind of somebody that would help? I don't know if there's a design person that would come in and kind of help staff, like arrange their.
So all.
In the best possible way, or?
So really, our building principals are becoming COVID experts. So, and, and that's a credit to Dr. Coleman and Tammy and their team. They met with both, all of our principals over the last couple of days. They met with all of our nurses. So we've got people in the building that have now been specifically trained on how to go in there and look. I know that all of our staff tomorrow, when they return, a big part of tomorrow is just simply, let's really, let's talk about this. This is how we're going to operate, and this is what we're going to do. This is what to expect. And if they have questions, those principals, vice principals, and nurses are going to be able to go into the classroom and say, okay, yeah, this is a good idea, or maybe we could do, so they've been trained in that.
Thank you.
You bet. One of the questions that we got often was just about supply lists relative to online versus in-person. And what we are saying is that online and in-person basically need to operate from the same supply list, that there aren't any significant differences. If there are certain things that aren't able to be purchased, such as manipulatives for math or other things, they'll be able to check those out through a process with their building. So those will be available, and our lists are on our website. So that's just to address that question that's come up. Another question that has come up, I had talked about this at our last board meeting, but the decision about going to a hybrid schedule that is the format in which we are on this A-B distance learning on Wednesday, and then A-B Thursday, Friday. And so the, the decision on that was made, because one of the benefits of a hybrid model is that you have the ability to have touchpoints with your kids during the week. And what we've found and what we've heard is that from our staff and from just looking at, if this model's been used in other places is, how do you minimize the amount of time between a student seeing his or her teacher one day and, and then seeing them again? So if we have a student going Monday, Tuesday, and then they don't see their teacher again until the next Monday, we've found that to be more problematic than see the teacher on Monday, they're off on distance learning a couple of days, and then see that teacher on Thursday. We feel like the teachers then have a more routine checkpoint, because we're really concerned about students and their well-being, specifically just how they're adjusting to this, this non-routine type issue that we have. And so that was the decision that we made relative to this, and we feel like it's in the best interest of the students so that we can take care of them and be in best communication with them, minimizing the distance between the times that they actually see adults that are working with them in the schools. A question that we had was, if, if I sign up for online, why can't we just start August 24th? And there's a couple different reasons for that. I understand the spirit of that. The spirit is that we're online, let's get going, and I appreciate that. There are a couple of things that we want to ensure. And this kind of goes back to what Dr. Coward talked about earlier. Thank you for the waving of the first read for the resources that we requested. She, she addressed this in the sense that we really want those online and in-person classes to be basically marching at the same rate as much as possible. And the reason for that is, is that we really hope that these online students are coming back to us in January and here face-to-face because of improved conditions. And we're able to be able to bring more students back into the building, or choosing to be back in the building. The other thing is, is that when we would, if we would start them two weeks ahead, there would be kind of this real disjointedness that we did not want to have happen, especially for our teachers that are teaching in-person. And we have several teachers that will be teaching in-person and sections of online. And we want them to have the ability to keep those two groups moving at the same pace as well. And so we felt like that's important. The other reality to this is, as I mentioned about the timelines overlapping, is that just being really prepared to have students get devices, make sure that those are all working, make sure that our teachers are ready, we're going to need that time to be ready before September 8th. So those are the reasons in which we have said that relative to the online start of August 24th. Back-to-school nights and orientations are going to look different, obviously. Almost all are virtual. We have a couple for new grade levels to the buildings. So we have sixth grade orientation, or we have kindergarten kickoff that we have redone to help try to get those kids that are in the building for the first time an opportunity to physically get in there, meet some adults, meet their teacher possibly, and do it in a way that's basically in a signup basis. And so virtual information is going to be the way that most students are going to get their school, back-to-school orientation type info. But the, the students that we're really concerned with are those ones that are in transitional grades, such as kindergarten, sixth, and ninth grade. And finally, before I turn it back over to Dr. Coward to finish this up, so I, I've mentioned this on the, the teachers, being able to know the, the student's schedule and, and teacher. We have this listed as wanting to find out that Monday, August 24th. That's what we're tracking toward right now. Again, we're working toward finishing a master schedule next week, and then getting our teachers in those digital courses and everything. The, the bottom line is right now is that the rescheduling of those students and the number that we had has created just a volume thing that has put a little hold on where we, we want to be, but it doesn't affect the originally published deadline that we talked about with teachers being announced on, on that, that week of the 24th there. High school students will get their schedules at registration, and we're, we're working with the high schools on when that best date would come. One of the things we're trying to shore up is technology distribution, which I'm going to turn that over to, to Dr. Coward. Any other questions of me?
Okay, well, let's talk about when we'll get laptops and other media technology. And we, we appreciate that. On the top, it says, we will share, by honor before August 14th, so I'm sharing right now, what that will be as it goes forward. So we do have a plan, and Mr. Drabru and the technology department are doing an incredible job of that, just working out those final logistics. Because what we're trying to set up is a system where, for example, if a family had a student at an elementary school, a middle and high school, they could pick them all up at the same time. They wouldn't have to make three separate trips. We're also trying to make it as safe as we can and try to do that. So the goal is, we will be delivering our technology August the 24th through September the 4th, so that's two full weeks. Plus, they're going to work on a full Saturday all day on August the 29th to provide that. There will be a signup process. We'll use signup genius so that we can control the crowds. We don't want people just showing up, all at 6 o'clock. And so we want to make sure we're controlling that also, and try to do that as we afford. You're going to get communication to our families, both from the technology department and from their buildings. And so we're going to try it on both sides so that everybody understands and knows how to do that. So, and they're trying to set up kind of a north and a south right now for distribution. The challenge is just finding those large spaces that are available, so we can have one way in, one way out. We know they'll need to be there about 10 minutes to log on, do security checks, passwords, all those type of things that we need to do. And so we appreciate the work of the technology team to do that. So we will be doing that August the 24th through September the 4th, plus Saturday, August the 29th. And so that information we kind of got on a signup genius of how we can do that. Ms. Sniper?
Will that also include our households that need hotspots?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And there's more information about that. It's actually listed on the frequently asked questions, too. There's more information on hotspots, too. Happy to help on that. The next one is what I would call the big hot mess right now. It's Misha Athletics, Suburban Conference, all those things. I, at this time, they did change some guidelines. So when Mrs. Perna, they had not changed any dates or guidelines. They did today. They put out what they call a possible alternative schedule. And what that does, basically, it allows school districts who are unable because of local requirements or shutdowns to move their fall sports, particularly football, soccer, those big, larger sports, to the spring. It's an interesting piece. When you do that, then you are not considered, of course, for anything for the championships or anything that's going on for that. And then the spring season is a little unusual. The fall sports would actually compete between March 12th and May 1st. And the spring sports would compete between May 14th and July the 10th. I'm expecting to hear something tonight or tomorrow morning from the Suburban Conference around just what they're thinking and what we're planning to do on that, and what their thought process is. You can see some challenges. We have to officially notify Misha and do a declaration of intent by September the 11th of what we are going to do. The other piece the alternate schedule does, if a school, for example, played four games and then had to cancel the rest of their season, they could pick up the, the rest of those games in the spring on the alternate schedule. There's about 50,000 questions that come with that. So what do you do with students, and what do you do with schedules, and what do you do? I don't have that answer. I don't know. Again, I've got a meeting early tomorrow morning with the Northland superintendents. I've got another one with our ADs, and then I should be hearing something from the Suburban Conference. And so it is very mixed throughout the entire metro area. We have some that are very committed to their sports, and we appreciate that. We understand that, and that connection it has for kids. We have others that are very anti. The other part will be, the part of this will be health departments. You may have heard today, again, these things happen daily. Wyngott County dropped all fall sports, all of them, except for, I think, cross-country, some ball. and golf and things that you can social distance set. So I think this is going to be a real hot issue. And again, I said earlier, we can make a decision either way, and we're not going to make people happy as we go forward. And I think that's going to be the challenge. The other challenge is just how do we do these activities and do them safely? I think it's challenging for me that we are delaying the start of the school year till September the 8th, and then we would actually have games prior to the start of the school year. So there's some optics with that that I think are unusual. There's a lot of emotion around this, as you might imagine. Last spring, students lost their schedules, they lost their sports, they lost their opportunities. And this is what I said earlier, I think the 2021 school is going to be more impacted than last spring, actually. And so I think this is the biggest piece. I just don't have a definitive answer, recommendation, or thought process. This one's going to be interesting to watch, particularly, I believe, in the next five to seven days. I think a lot is going to happen. It's interesting, we see things at the pro level, we see things at the college level, and you're, you're seeing that split when you've got the Big Ten and the Pac-12 have said no, and then you've said so far Big 12, SEC and ACC are going. And it's just going to be, I, I, I don't know. I hope at the end of history, I think the hope for all of us is we're on the right side of history on the end of this. I think there are some challenges that maybe we don't know about physically of what the impact on, and the long-term impact of the coronavirus might be. So I don't know, this is going to be an interesting piece. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and I probably don't have the answer, but fire away, you've got something. You're as dumbfounded as I am, yes, I understand.
So. Oh, no. Going back to the deadline, our district needs to make a decision by Friday, September 11th, is that correct? As to what we're.
Yeah, but it's kind of a, one of those, I, I call it, it's a, it's a lagging piece because we obviously have to make that decision before then.
Right, well before.
You have to practice, so it's kind of a.
Trying to get a sense here of what the real timeline is. It's not a workable timeline.
No, but welcome to my world. This is what this looks like all the time. And so I really don't know, I'm curious.
Well, it's not largely depend on the conference too. I mean, you can't really delay your season if no one else is, or vice versa.
Correct. And of course, there's rumors that health departments are going to close down all these things. And so until they happen, they're just rumors, and I don't know what that's going to mean or not mean.
When is the suburban group meeting?
They met this afternoon. They could not come to consensus.
Okay.
And I do not know when they're going to meet again, but I'm supposed to get some type of communication tonight or tomorrow morning. So I, I feel like I have throughout this entire process. So we'll just.
Then I will say is that it feels like the spring athletes are taking a harder hit either way because they've already had a season canceled. They could possibly get their season hijacked again by moving it from May to July because that would limit a lot of them.
And that's what we're doing for some of the schools.
And Dr. Cardhough, do we have representation on the suburban conference?
Yes, ma'am. We do. There's an executive board that's made up, there's a superintendent group that's an executive board for it, and then they met this afternoon also with all of our ADs that we have two there. And then there are communication with me going back and forth, but there was no, I thought there would be something from Misha this morning at 9:00 AM, which is what this is.
Yeah.
They were supposed to meet, I thought there'd be something from them, but I could actually come tonight and say, hey, this is what we know or don't know. And right now, I don't know that we know anything more today frankly than we knew a week ago, I'll be very frank with you.
Just a numbers question. Do we know, and this might be a question actually for Dr. Dial, of the 12,000 students in our district, how many actually play sports?
Or Misha activities?
Or, yes, I should say.
That's a challenge.
Misha.
Yeah, that includes marching.
Which includes clubs and.
Bands and everything else. I don't know that we have that number totally right now, but it's a high number.
Yeah.
Because it does include cheerleading, dance.
And corps.
But name anything in one of those lines, debate, speech.
What?
Wrestling, pick anything.
Do we have representation of Misha?
We do not. It is a, that's an elected board. We do have someone from this area that is representing Kansas City area, and our executive president this year, that's Dr. Clemens from Kansas City.
Do they solicit or survey their members or?
Yes, ma'am. They've surveyed them. I think the challenge that Misha is in, and I can respect this greatly, what it looks like for an urban or suburban school district looks different than a rural school district. And that's the challenge that they're stuck in. And many of the rural districts have said, you took away our spring sports and you shouldn't have done that. We had no cases, we had no reason. And so they're pretty adamant, they're not going to change anything.
They're not going to give.
And that's the challenge. The St. Louis schools are all out. We were hoping for a five-day, six-day split maybe, and like K, or one through four, continuing five and six, have a delay or something. That didn't happen either. So this idea came up back in June, and it was said that will never happen, and so that's how this whole system goes now we have this option on the table. So I think everyone's just trying to respond. I think even in theirs, they said it could change, even on their basic statement that said today's action, this action does not cancel the traditional sports season in capital letters at this time. So everything's on the table.
Representative that represents Kansas City, are they, do they do small and large districts?
Yes, they do the entire region, for Kansas City region. And ours is mostly the larger part, but we're all. Well, that's all I know about that one unless there's something, any other question?
I'd say I'd like, if all things can happen, I want that to happen. Now, if there's a tuberculosis outbreak or something and our team gets sick, well then obviously our team can't play.
Yeah, I think the challenge on this is how to maintain that. Because once you play a team, for example, we go play Lee Summit, and then if a student was positive, any of them, then those, those students are now quarantined for 14 days. I think those are going to be the challenges around the positivity rates and the exposure rates. I think the other challenge is, I think it's going to be hard on students. Nobody wants to be the one that caused their team to have to quarantine for 14 days. So it puts them in a bad position too. And I think there's just so many different factors with this. I want them to play. I'm watching them practice outside my window. I, I want them to play. I just want them to be able to do it safely, as safe as we can. And I hate them, I'm just trying to balance, our first goal is academics, that's what we're here for, just to educate our children. But I also want them to have these experiences because we know that that's important.
What you just talked about was exactly what the patron who wrote in to us was talking about was that the numbers, she feels the numbers being tested does not accurately represent the number of cases there are because there is pressure, peer pressure, whatever, not to be the one who causes their team to be quarantined.
I don't know if that's going to happen, but it's, it's pretty likely as you go forward. And so I think that's the challenge for us. I want to go watch the football game, I want to watch the marching band, I want to go see the soccer team play, I want to go, you know? And so we, we'll just try to do this and we'll do everything that we can, and, but we'll also follow the high, the guidelines from our health department's group.
Are we also making plans for if we can play and not have fans there that will stream our games?
Yes, but those plans have been, and, and streaming may look different. It may look very fancy, and it may look, I'm holding up a camera with a Facebook on it, you know, it's going to look like everything. But I think we have to be realistic that the fans, the capacity limit's already down. And so who gets to come in? We'll, we'll enjoy that next part of that if we have games too. And then who, who comes when? And then you still have your visitors and your parents, and I think it's so much of what we had to do with graduation, I think, would be some type of a thing. I don't know what the number is, but I think likely something like that. Well, as to find out more, we're happy to share it. On the next slide, we do talk about, we had this question quite a bit around IEP, students with individual educational plans for special services. Will they still be in person if we're on split mode or distance learning? The answer is no. Only a few students with specific needs. We do have some students that with autism or essential skills that have very high needs that cannot be met in any way that we do that. And that actually, all that depends on the severity of their need. It also has to be an IEP team decision following the federal law. And so I think there was a bit of a misunderstanding out there, and we just wanted to clarify that for our families. And Dr. Daniels and his team, speaking of a lot of work to do, they have to touch every IEP of every student that has signed up, regardless of where they are, and that is really, even on the hybrid model for us, because it changes their minutes. And, and so every IEP has to be touched, and that is a really big deal. So we're working on this one, but it is a big piece because we need to guarantee that we are meeting the requirements of their IEP and meeting their needs. And then how we support our families, this is a big piece we're doing. We are developing a parent university and actually was in a conversation earlier that says we've got, have this done. A lot of this is around, we heard from our parents on our feedback survey is, we're not teachers, we're trying to help our students, how do we do this? And so that's what this is for. I appreciate the work of Dr. Maya, she's leading this effort to try to get it up. But one of those things that our parents need to help them, and so we'll have that online resource up for them so they can access this whenever they need to. We're also investigating how we'll feed our students when they're learning at home. The current model from the USVA does end on August the 31st. That was the Feed Everybody model. And so I don't know what is going to happen in that. We haven't heard anything from, from Bad Culture yet on what they're going to do on that or the USVA. So we'll follow that one, but we will, making efforts. Ron and Nicole and her team have already figured out ways that we can do it on distance days, and we're figuring out all those picket places. So they're doing an incredible job on that. And I think the other big one is just providing support to our families in need, connecting to those resources. Our social workers are going above and beyond to make sure we're hitting that, whether it's the clothing bag, food banks, back-to-school supplies, any of those support pieces we need. And what's not to mention there is the things around social, emotional, and mental health needs that our students and families have, and we're working on that very closely with them as we go ahead. And so I think that's all we have for this evening. Again, we'll continue to update these, and we'll continue to provide these updates on our website. There, you can find them because Nicole's team is putting those down by the last date that they have been approved, and so that way they can see the most recent at the top, and then that'll just continue to filter down. Anything else that we can answer for you today?
I have a quick question before we leave. Do we do any sort of surveys with our families and staff and students who did summer school?
Yes, and we don't have that data. They're just not collecting that data back. That went out. So yeah, we want to know how it went with them and then represent that data. You normally get that data in September. We do a presentation on summer school and a wrap-up, and so we'll have that for you at that time.
Okay, thanks.
But there's been like anecdotal evidence gathered from teachers and staff that worked there to pass on that knowledge?
Yes, Dr. Dial, and Mike's not even said, Dr. Dial, Dr. Bridwell, and Dr. Campbell are working, and our professional development is, what did we learn? What are best practices? What worked, what didn't work? And it's nothing better than being there. Our K.A. teachers are going to help with that. Our challenges are high school because they were all virtual, and so we're going to use some of our middle school teachers to help with that also, and just what are some best practices that they had. There's no reason to go through that and not learn from it. And we learned a lot in summer school. We, we did learn a lot, and our, our teachers shared that they learned a lot too, and we want to share that information.
But do you have like a, an actual plan for them to share knowledge and?
It's a part of our professional development. Mike, you want to come on up and talk about that? It's a, yeah, it is a part of our professional development plan.
It's not just gossip around the water, but it's.
Right, so I know that even today, Tammy had the nurses and the nurses from summer school were sharing those exact procedures and so on. And so as each staff comes back, the principals are planning a specific part of that, that when they, so that information has been shared. I know that they have standard information from Tammy's office and not just on how we handle all the protocols, but these were ways that, and examples of what happened in summer so that there are some concrete examples on how they can respond to that. So yeah, we've planned that into, and that's already started this week with our administrators and with our nurses.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, board.
Any other question? Let's try that. Any other questions regarding the reopening update? Hearing none, we will move on to item eight, information reports. We have first reads tonight. Items 8.1 through 8.4 are bids, contracts, and agreements. Item 8.5 is a curriculum, and item 8.6 is the local plan for compliance with state regulations implementing Part B of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Board, any comments or questions for Dr. Kelly?
I'd actually like to ask Dr. Kelly, if he wouldn't mind coming after the presentation. I do want to highlight some things on item 8.4, if you don't mind, on the barrier road on the tennis courts. This has been an ongoing piece, and it's, we tried to explain as best we can within the document itself that the original funding allowed for this was $725,000. The bids both came in high, both were an asphalt and a tension court, as a concrete tension court as we go forward. And we shared in that that there's a requirement in the contract with Kansas City, Missouri that we must go back to the Parks Board. Let's see if this helps. Anything in the Parks Board that goes over that for additional funding? And so Dr. Kelly has been shepherding this project through. We have our bids and they're sitting there for you. This is part of the conversation we want to talk about because part of our challenge is we're kind of waiting on them, but, and when do you do the projects? And I think Paul can give us additional details on that if you'd like, Paul.
Yeah, the, there was almost unanimous that the price on the post-tension option was very good when compared to the asphalt, and then it, there's, it's, there's a consensus amongst tennis, tennis players and coaches and, and experts in the area that the post-tension would be a, a better solution long-term for maintenance and playability. And so, and the price that we received there was very favorable, but in both cases, the bids were higher than we had originally allocated. So the agreement that you approved at the last meeting stated that if that was to happen, that we would go back, as Dr. Coward mentioned. And so that will be the next step in the process to see what, if any, the Parks Board could allocate for that overage. It is, as I wrote in the item, it would be my intention to request the post-tension concrete as we think that is the most long-term economic decision we could make for the overall sort of life of the court. It does put into flux in terms of the schedule, and so we did get schedule pricing on these bids, and so that could become, once we pick, there was two completely different sets of vendors based on which option we pick. And so once we get some confirmation on, on which of those we will have money to do, then we can negotiate the schedule. It doesn't appear, the other, the other factor was the conversation you had in the last item, which was, well, if, if Misha was to cancel or if there was something that caused a cancellation in the season, that would be an opportunity for us to get this all completed before winter. There's some time, real weather sensitivity to the last portion of that project on the, the surface at the very end of that. Oddly, the concrete actually is, we would have the ability to actually work throughout the winter if we went with the concrete option, but that'll top surface in both cases will take an additional four to eight weeks, temperatures above 50. So I don't, I don't think it would, will impact the girls' season. I don't think we'll be able to get the timeframe in unless the season is canceled. And so what this could potentially mean is the, the boys' season, the boys may need to start on other courts, perhaps Park South for the first part of their season while, while the surface cures and becomes ready to play for the final part of their season. The other option would be just to wait on both seasons to complete and do this in the next summer.
I just know this has been a big topic, so if you guys have any questions, we just want to give as much information as we can, get it out to our public. This is what we're trying to do. This is where we are. And then Dr. Kelly's working to, with the Park Board, and they have this information, I know, so. Any questions or anything else on that? We just want to give you, that's the update, that's kind of where it is. And so until we hear from them, I think that will be the decision then around funding for what that's going to look like.
Do you feel like we're getting? Do you feel like we're getting, um, good, uh, representation from our city council people up here with, working with the city and Parks Board and all that?
Yeah, I think the P I Act, um, process was very favorable and I think they really worked on it, they have to secure that $325,000, $350,000. They've not, would not ask them to be a part of this decision, so, um, well, we haven't submitted that yet until we had this meeting tonight in writing, uh, per the agreement. So, we've not utilized them at, at this point.
Good, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Kelly. All right, we will move on to item nine, uh, 9.1 specifically. This is our annual adoption of policy BBFA, Board Member Conflict of Interest and Financial Disclosure. I will need a motion and a second to adopt policy BBFA, Board Member Conflict of Interest and Financial Disclosure as presented. So moved.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Questions? Hearing none. I have a motion from Ms. Bowlen and a second by Mr. Klein to adopt policy BBFA as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries 700. Mr. Bowlen. At this time, uh, we have, uh, poet comments. Are there any patrons that wish to address the board regarding any items for tonight's posted agenda? And I'm not seeing any. Um, so, we will move on to Board Member Reports and Requests. Mrs. Yamada?
None, thank you.
Mr. Klein?
No, thank you.
Ms. Bowlen?
Uh, yes, real quick, I was able to attend, um, the opening of the Clothing Center and replenish Casey Tuesday evening and, um, as usual, it's fantastic, it was well organized and they had signups and cars coming and going and, and all that as usual. So, it was just a great event and, um, nice to see them adapt to our current environment and help out the community. It was huge.
Mr. Monses?
No, thank you.
Mrs. Newberger?
None, thank you.
Mr. Fane?
Yeah, just quickly, I, um, I want to thank Dr. Coward and our entire management community for just dealing with, uh, all the uncertainties of the future. And I also just want to thank our entire community for giving us the grace as we work through it. It's, uh, an amazingly challenging time for everyone and I'm, I'm grateful that I live in a community that's so supportive of our overall mission. So, I just wanted to reflect on that.
Thank you, Mr. Fane. At this time, I will need a motion and a second to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Chapter 610, Section 21 of the revised Missouri statutes for the purpose of discussing matters related to subsection 2, property. So moved.
So moved.
I have a motion from Ms. Bowlen and a second by Mr. Klein to adjourn to closed session to discuss property matters. Mrs. Hicks, could you please call the roll? Bowlen?
Yes.